And then a discussion on the annual report. And then the board will go in, will close that public portion of the meeting, go into executive session. We will not be coming back into public session after that point. Want to open up to the public? Mr. Kennedy, you indicated you wanted to speak to something.
I assume everyone can hear me, it's fine. A couple of years ago, I suggested to the highway department that they paint the speed limit on the road. Yeah, we don't have money and this and that, yeah, I said, hey, I'll buy the paint. Whatever. So things went by, and I live on High Street, 326 High Street. This is a picture looking results from my driveway. And I would challenge anyone here to tell me what the speed limit is according to the sign, which is there. But that's only half the problem because even if people could see the sign, when they come up that hill, then some of them, some of them are my neighbors. And they're going more than speed. And many times if I'm walking my dog or working in the field or something, I look over and the drivers are looking at the road just about forty percent of the time. And that's a conservative estimate. The rest of the time, they are online, whatever. And so the sign really doesn't matter. It should be in the road. Now, I was told, well, the state won't let you do that. Well, that's, we used to spread it on the field, but that's below me. Because if you go to Stowe, Mass., if you've ever been to Stowe, if you go to the Stowe Airport and back road, the speed limit is painted on the road.
Is that road owned by the town or is it owned by the airport? Is it a private road to the airport?
If you go from 117 to the airport on Stowe Public Roads, there's more than one road, you will see this being painted there. And I would say, well, there's a sign there telling people what it, as I said, they don't look at the signs. And if that's so, why did you paint a line by the stop sign? There's a stop sign there, why do you need a line? Because people don't look to the right and the left, they look in front forty percent of the time. So I would ask you, and it's not just the highway department thing because I walk, and I'm not the only old person that walks on the street, and there are young people that walk on the street too. People with dogs, kids, school buses and so forth. Police chiefs will tell you that they drive too fast, and people drive too fast, we all know that. And this would be one thing that might, at least they couldn't say, which they legitimately could say now, well, I didn't see the sign, you know? And it reminds me of a quick anecdotal story from back in the old days. I forget whether it was our charge area or whoever, stopping someone from going through a stop sign. Well, the stop sign had been mowed down a year and a half ago. And they knew it was there. My son said, go back in, we're back in for the show. Anyway, I would ask you to find somewhere in your budget the money to paint the speed limit on the road. And it would be good for the old people, they know the seniors would like that.
Why, are they gonna do it?
Walking, and getting help would like that because walking is a legitimate health issue. I mean, more people should walk more. So that's my plea. Now, what do you think? Did anyone find the sign, that's what I want to know.
No, but I know it's a newly paved road and it's a
It's a runway for sure.
Oh, good, I'll keep it just for evidence.
Where is it, just out of curiosity?
What is it?
Where is the sign?
Oh, where's the sign, you ask? Well, if you look down here, it would be opposite this telephone pole, on the right-hand side, opposite, yeah, right.
Take it under consideration.
Does it make sense?
It's a, it is an unfortunate but reoccurring problem in town. We've had a few other folks share some frustrations about the speed and our
Did they suggest painting it in the road?
They did not, but our police department was
What do you think about that?
I think if they're not looking at a street sign, they're not gonna look at the street either, to be perfectly honest with you, so.
And do you think they are looking at the street signs?
I just think people are driving, and now you literally have driverless cars now, so it's just irrelevant, to be honest. It's up to the driver. There really isn't a solution.
My suggestion would be that somebody, too, contact maybe the state because if you think you have to, town Stowe, or just do it, who's gonna? I mean, I don't believe it's illegal for you to paint the speed limit in the road. And it is in other places too. Just the same as you have stop painted there, pedestrian crossing, you've got crossing marks down here. Why, why don't you just put a sign, say there are pedestrians crossing sometimes? Those people don't understand.
Well, I hear you, Bob, I understand, because I live on a road where people fly by as well. Honestly, I don't think people are gonna pay much attention to the speed limit unless they feel, one, there's an obstacle that is gonna slow them down, such as a speed bump or a police presence. I would rather see the speed bumps on the road, but I know the highway department certainly wouldn't go for that.
Speed limit introduces a whole new problem, a whole new issue, which does not exist with painting the speed limit on the road.
Well, I don't think, I hear you.
I don't understand the reluctance to it.
I just don't think that it's gonna be super effective, but I'll be happy to
At all effective?
I'll be happy to call Stowe and see if they find that, if it makes an impact. I'll do that, I'll call them and talk to them and see if they find that there's an actual benefit to it, if it's successful.
Thank you. My thought.
All right, Mr. Cheney?
It could be an experiment, a scientific experiment. You could, well, you could paint a sign on the road. I suspect that for a few weeks it would have an impact, but
Richard, can I get a second, Richard, please?
Maybe. And see what happens. And it could be, you know, you could write an article on the whole song, something, uh, be very exciting.
Another angle, 'cause I've seen this before, is in parts of Boston, they started putting, like, everyone uses Google Maps or the Waze app to get to places. You can actually put like roadblock or pothole on there, even if it's not there. And it will, it literally will slow people down because they're quite, they're looking for like
You don't have to put potholes up there because
That was rhetorical, but Yeah, but it, again, I kinda echo what Leah shared. I wish it would help change the behavior, you know, perhaps the speed. What's the, the speed trailer can go up there for a short term, but I don't, I don't know what's a viable long-term solution up there. Or any, or in any of our tradeaways, because it's, people are in a rush supposedly.
I noticed when you go to the supermarket, or you go anywhere where there's public parks, they have handicap parking, it's painted on the road, and people pretty much respect that. So I think it works.
I will, I will call Stowe and ask them about it.
It'll be interesting to see, do they feel like wasted their money painting a road in Stowe? I don't But let me just, let me, painting lines on roads is not unusual. It's, it's not just in Stowe, it's done elsewhere, Cambridge has got it, and I, there's nothing wrong with it. And I remember the discussion from years ago that you brought up here, right? And I, I think, if I'm right, we, the, we, this board, and Karen was not on it, this board, the select board, sent the decision-making back to the road commissioners. They, they literally have responsibility for, you know, stop bars and yellow lines and yada, yada. And I think we sent that back to the road commissioners for consideration and review. Well, I would have gone to a road commission meeting, but I couldn't find one scheduled, and I was told they only have them as needed. So I figured, you guys made the mistake of having public meetings, so here I am.
So I, I think that I had reached out to them when you came, you, you mentioned this to me in my office too, and I had sent them, sent them an email. I think I sent the highway superintendent an email with this, and I actually think it was, the chair happens to be here, I, I think it was discussed at one of their meetings, if I'm not, if, am I correct about that, Mike? I wasn't at the meeting, but I think it was, I saw it on an agenda.
So I, I don't know where that went, Mr. Mike.
It's been, in the end, no. What? If that's gonna solve a problem, they ain't gonna stop, they ain't gonna slow it.
Is it gonna help?
And my next week, my next week, they want more money in the budget, and they wanna tell us they want that stop, that speed limit on that road, as far as we're concerned, bye.
All right, unfortunately, one question for Joan, but I'm gonna have to cut this conversation because we have a presentation and we have an obligation at six o'clock, so in order to keep the meeting rolling. Joan, quickly.
Just curious, if a resident was frustrated and took a pan of cake and a paintbrush and did it himself, what is the penalty for it?
I have no idea.
Sounds like, sounds like Robin Hood.
Okay. Sorry, folks, is there anything else in public comment to discuss here?
Well, thank you, anyway. Before we leave, how are we, what's the path forward here? I'm gonna send this back to the road commissioners?
I'm going to, well, the road commissioners have already apparently rendered an opinion. I will follow up, I'll ask Stowe to see if there's, if they do find a benefit. If they say there's a benefit, then maybe we can reconsider the conversation with the road commissioners. Or we'll bring out Joan with her spray paint and fix the problem for you.
Well, thank you very much. Bob, it's always good seeing you.
Thanks, Bob.
I want to play that sometimes in Struck, right?
Okay, anybody else? No, all right, so we are gonna move on to the budget presentation.
Okay, I'm gonna breeze through this, it's long, but it's, it's gonna be quick. So first, just to quickly review our budget calendar and what we've done to date. We've had several TRICOM meetings, the chair of the select board, me and chair of the advisory board serve on that committee. Departments have already submitted their budgets, we've had budget meetings with most. And as you know, I've sent off summary budgets to all of you with several scenarios that will go through. So advisory's meeting next week, I'm gonna give advisory a similar presentation that I'm doing tonight. We're waiting on final numbers, I think, from Towne Groton. And the, and the school committee, Towne Groton has a meeting Monday night, I believe. Town management just released their budget today. And then we have to kind of build consensus on some decisions that need to be made around spending, basically. So revenue is essentially estimated at what we normally estimate. Two and a half plus new growth at a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Our excluded debt is reducing dramatically from twenty-five to twenty-six, both on the schools, mostly on the school side, but also on the town side. State aid, we've estimated four percent. The governor's budget just came out and we're right in that ballpark. Seven hundred fifty in local aid. This budget presentation includes a reduction in free cash by fifty thousand dollars. We use three hundred fifty-eight this fiscal, I have three hundred and eight thousand in twenty-six. It's an overview. As we all know, real estate taxes are the major portion of our revenue sources, and this is a breakdown of the levy, two and a half new growth and our excluded debt. This is a slide just to give you an idea, I know you all know, but just to give you an idea of where our local receipts come from, the vast majority is motor vehicle excise tax. So this free cash slide is really just to demonstrate, this line here is our certified free cash number. The bars are what, are what we've used to support the budget. And then this line, I'm colorblind enough, I think that's on, it should come on, something. This is our free cash balance, once we've used it for operating. And as you see kind of throughout, if we're using a lot of free cash to balance, we have a low free cash number. If we, as we started to reduce our free cash allowance, our balance increases. This is a quick slide on best practices for reserve funds. We currently have three hundred forty-nine thousand dollars in our general stabilization. Our free cash balance after using it for operating was at two hundred fifty-eight in twenty-five. This gives you, kind of this corner up here, the right, top right, gives you an idea of where the range is that we wanna be. We have six hundred and seven total. Based on the recommended best practices, we should have slightly over a million to slightly under two million. So these numbers are based on what we received from departments. So department requests resulted in an overall five point five percent increase. And that's taking into account the debt service reduction. The schools' assessment is an overall increase of nine point one nine percent. That includes a capital request reduction and a significant, like I said, debt service reduction. We're still estimating the vocational school at five percent, but we don't have final numbers yet. So the total operating was slightly under eight, when including capital, seven point three. And this is the breakdown. Our general government is, based on department request, was increasing significantly, ten point three percent. This is just the town side, not the school side. So overall, six, slightly under six. This is based on my recommendations, it's slightly, slightly under five. So I have made reductions based on department request that I distributed before the meeting. But overall, four point eighty-two percent on the town side. So some of the major changes in our budget, municipal salaries is slightly over four percent. That does not include a ten thousand dollar increase in the reserve fund in preparation of the comp and class study that we're doing. The insurance and assessments have increased by almost ten percent. That's largely caused by the pension assessment increase, twenty-four percent. Right now, we're not paying for regional dispatch. This budget in twenty-six includes an increase of ten thousand in the communications line of the police and an increase of twelve thousand in the communications line of the fire department. I'm doing that, trying to plan for when we're gonna have to pay. If we have to come up with it all in one year, it's gonna be really difficult. But if we build it into the budget over time, it'll be easier. And then, as I talked about, the debt service is decreasing. This is a quick study on what we were spending. Twenty, twenty eighteen was the easiest year in the past that I could get my hands on the numbers, so that's what I used. So you see, the breakdown in cost is very similar. The insurance and assessments have shifted slightly, and the schools have shifted slightly, but overall percent is very similar, and same with the revenue. We rely more on the tax levy in real estate than we did in eighteen. But if you include the excluded debt, it's basically the same. I thought this was interesting, when you look at the excluded debt service, and I include the capital exclusion that was adopted in twenty twenty-three, but the excluded debt has steadily decreased over, over time since twenty eighteen. And so the budget scenarios that we're gonna review now, there's three that I've kind of focused on. One is just based on the new revenue that we're, that we have available in twenty twenty-six. One, which is based on the Groton number, which is essentially what Groton can afford to give to the schools without an override. And then the last is a level service budget for Groton Dunstable School District, which requires an override in both towns. So the available revenue that we have for twenty-six, when you net out the debt service and free cash reduction, is three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. When you proportionally assign the new revenue, the town gets a hundred and nineteen thousand, which creates a deficit of a hundred and ten thousand dollars on the town side. The school district receives two hundred and five thousand dollars, which creates a five hundred and forty-six thousand dollar deficit based on level service. And if the tech, both tech goes up five percent, it creates a three thousand dollar deficit in their assessment. If we have to match the Groton assessment, which they can afford without an override, we would need a two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar override to match that number.
Or is that on top of, or is that just, that's just the override? It's not on top of the first box, right? It's just two hundred?
No, 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 yeah, yeah, but yes, I think I understand your question. The two sixty-one is based on the town administrator's recommended budget.
Yep.
In total. In total. And by the way, the town administrator's recommended budget is far from, it's not five.
It hasn't been approved by advisory.
No, and even, even for me, I, I think there's gonna have to be adjustments made. So it's a work in progress. The school district's level service budget, in the assessment that that causes to the town, creates a six hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollar deficit.
To just Dunstable?
To Dunstable.
Okay.
Is that number changed? Because I thought you had said it was five hundred or something. Like last year. The, um, the level service, did you
This one?
Yeah. Where were you, like, I had that level posted.
It did, it changed because, yes, I forgot my, I forgot the cause, but yes. I just did these, but they're very similar, they're based on each scenario, but they don't change dramatically. So this goes through the school district's financial impacts based on each scenario. So with the proportional share of revenue, the school assessment, as I went over, goes up two hundred and five thousand, it's a two and a half percent increase, and creates a four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar problem, just on the Dunstable side. That does not incorporate the deficit it requires on the Groton side. I think that, over two million? Again, it's about, about the same as last year. Based on the Groton assessment, that increases our, the town's assessment by three hundred and fifty-three thousand, it's a four point three two percent increase for us, and it's three hundred thousand less than their level service budget. And then the level service budget creates a six hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar problem. This is just a reminder, the schools did have to make some substantial and very difficult decisions for this fiscal year. Their budget only, their budget increased by under one percent. I think they were twenty, I think I had that number right, twenty-seven positions that were cut. Class sizes have increased in certain periods at the elementary schools, school union, and middle and high schools.
What was the total increase? If it increased by point nine, what was it, three, four percent?
The dollar, the dollar number?
Yeah, yeah. I like you.
So these are the impacts of the town, if we were to have to match these, the Groton assessment and the level service budget. For the town to match the Groton assessment, it would need to reduce its operating budget by a half percent from twenty-five from this year. And if we were to have to match the level service budget for the schools in the resulting assessment, we'd have to reduce our operating budget by two and a half and cut capital. That would include a cut in capital. This is just to give you an idea of the magnitude of the deficits in each scenario. The Groton assessment creates a two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar deficit. Oh, did I? No, I think you're right, I think it was five sixty-one, I think I I'm gonna have to go back and check it out. But this, the magnitude of the deficits you see here, the library budget's two hundred thousand dollars, both our per diem firefighters, the day shift, hundred and six, the police officers, eighty-four roughly, capital's one twenty, and so on and so forth. Again, we do have options with capital and free cash, I don't know that that's the best path forward, but, but that's something we should talk about. This, this just gives you, this just shows the operating, just the operating increases compared to our tax levy increase. So you see the problem, our tax levy's going up, two point three seven, and here are the operating increases. So there's still some variables here. We don't have final numbers for health or general liability insurance. We did get an email this week though, for the health insurance, that, that does show potential significant increases. Our employee salaries, we do have the comp and class study going on now. We have police union negotiations going on. Our fire chief's contract and my contract are being negotiated. Free cash is not yet certified, we're waiting on DLS. Last I reached out to them, there were about ten communities in front of us, so that was last week, we should be getting close now. And we don't have final numbers from the schools. And like I said earlier, the TA recommendations, I think they're probably gonna need some adjustments. Yeah, it is five sixty-one, I don't know where that
I think it's originally, it was that part number?
Yeah, it was. And then you came down. Yep, it's five sixty-one, I'm sorry about that. So this is just to give you a general idea, these are estimates, but a general idea of if the deficits are what we're projecting at the moment, this would, and we went for an override for that amount, just in that scenario, this is what the impact for the average single-family tax bill would be. So for the two sixty-one, it would be two hundred and five dollars. And for the level service budget, five sixty-one, it would be four hundred and forty-five dollars. So without an override, this is an estimated increase between FY twenty-five and FY twenty-six. This is just based on the two and a half plus new growth. Because our excluded debt is reducing, the rough estimate for a tax increase based on the budget would be two twenty-six seventy on average. So our history, this is our history with debt exclusion override elections and general fund override elections. So we have pretty good success with debt exclusion requests. General fund override requests are essentially fifty-fifty. And that's since like nineteen ninety-one, I believe. And I just put this slide because it's, it's true, there's a lot of communities that are going through this. So we're, we're certainly not alone in our budget challenges for FY twenty-five, and I don't think we'll be alone with our budget challenges for twenty-six. In twenty-five, there were forty-two communities going for a general override. These don't add up because there were communities that asked twice, there are some communities that had two questions on the ballot. And debt exclusion, the same thing, there were seventy-seven total communities, but there were several who had more than one debt exclusion request. Average single-family tax bill, I just put the variance, the variance here, so you see the difference between our, our bill and the state average. But we, we remain pretty steady ahead of the average, but the difference is pretty consistent. And our values are slightly less than the state average, and that's been for the last several years. So for capital, we went through a pretty comprehensive process. So for capital, we went through a, a, a pretty comprehensive process. And I have a draft capital plan that's been put together and shared with everyone. Um, at the moment, these are the capital needs for police, fire, highway and, um, library that we're trying to fund. But obviously that's gonna, that's gonna be impacted by the rest of the budget. And I just wanna put this, include this because there are a lot of things that are kind of in the work and a lot of things that we're working on to either look at ways to, um, raise revenue and look at ways to, um, save money. We have the cell tower that we're still working on, which will help offset water rates, hopefully. We have municipal application plan program. The Massa Plan Committee, Land Use Economic Development continue their work. We have the LIP projects that are in progress, uh, for permitting and approvals, new buildings going on. We're just starting a conversation now on the Best Triangle. And as you know, we adjusted permit license and other municipal fees. And I just put these because these are things that we are kind of been focused on and working on. And policies that have been adopted, which kind of set goals for us in terms of one-time revenue use and free cash and general stabilization balances. So these are things that are still up in the air, I guess, that we need to. I mean, I would like some feedback if possible. One is, the town operating increase right now is four point two. Need some direction on, do we need to, and that includes some reductions that I've already made. Do we wanna continue to look at reductions? Free cash, we've reduced by fifty, do we wanna continue that? Do we wanna level, level it from this year to next year? Or do we wanna increase it? Are we open to a general fund override? And if we do need to make budget reductions, you know, to come up with the two, what is it, two sixty and five sixty, I think, right? What are some of the things you think we should focus on? There's nowhere easy answers to these questions. I also don't wanna come here and propose things that people are like, no way they're doing that, so. Um, and then anything else?
No, it's helpful, I think it's. Oh, do you want me to not talk or?
You want answers to this clue right now?
You know, I think I said this when we had a much broader meeting at the, the middle school where it feels like we're just cycling the same record over and over again. And I'm always hesitant to play the same song over and over again because it gets old.
Absolutely.
I don't know, and I think that spotlight on the headlines is really accurate. Cause you can go into towns and you see the little highway signs that say like, voting override again, voting override again. Like how many times can you go back to the well? Until it's been parsed down so much that there's nothing left? But this is helpful to understand the shortages and, you know, like the level service budget for the schools is an eight percent increase in the overall budget, but you guys are asking for nine percent?
So this goes back to kind of this confusing conversation of the budget versus the attachment, right? So, yes, the budget increases up of now, this could shift downward a little bit, but I think it's set at seven point four percent. The reason that this assessment to the town is larger is because every single year, the seat of Massachusetts basically says like what, how it's gonna be split between the town. Like what the minimum contribution should be from Dunstable versus from Grotton. So one of the reasons, you know, Dunstable's is increasing is because it is shifting slightly more towards Dunstable. Um, another reason is because, just like you guys are stepping down our use of free cash, like we're trying to step down our use of, you know, just our free cash. So like, rather than us doing that, like it's getting put back onto the town. Like we've been doing that for years to try to ease some of the burden on the towns. So we're trying to gradually reduce that amount. So the number that is reflected in the budget and the assessments right now includes that budget guidance. That is potentially subject to change or not, like that would be a, a decision for the whole committee to make. And what are some other reasons why the assessment is higher?
Because stagnant, um, increase from chapter seven and that the amount that that rose is not proportional for what we have to, um, assess for town. So again, that shifts a little bit toward the town.
Yeah, it's, it's tough that the town's at between four and a half to five percent and our, our school district's at eight percent. You know, the delta of three percent on a fifty million dollar budget is one point five million dollars. And if you take that in Dunstable terms and just make it twenty percent, then you're at three hundred K, that pretty much nukes our deficit basically, yeah.
We just can't possibly cut enough on our side to make either number happen.
Yeah.
I mean, we have, we have pretty slim budgets for all of the departments here. I mean, we've gone through this exercise repeatedly for years and years and years and we've tried, you know, not having firefighters and that's just not, that is not something I'm willing to accept again going forward is to reduce that. I'm not in support of reducing the police department. There already is one officer that had been voted in before, not that cut. There is a safety family, we see there are fires in this town, we've had several this year, everyone's familiar with that. Those are large budgets, but they are not ones that I feel that there's really any fat to turn off of those. So I guess if you're asking flat out question of willing to support an override, I personally would be certainly willing to consider that and it's not something we did not anticipate, especially with the loss of the override last year, we knew that this was going to come back. I don't think the school's in it, is it, I mean, everybody can trim a little bit, but you took some major cuts last year and having to do that again would probably be pretty devastating to the, to the school, so.
Yeah, I mean, we did, um, we do our financial forecasting and, um, in the latest forecast, I believe, it projected an FY twenty six before the budget process. It projected a five hundred and sixty thousand dollar deficit. And holy funding, it's five sixty one.
Yeah, right. Was inaccurate.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is great, it's great modeling.
But it's pretty, it's, yeah, I mean, it's pretty close, pretty close to what we thought.
Before I get to you, Jonah, Ron, do you have any input?
Um, no, I, I, Leah, I, I, you've said it exactly the way it is and, you know, I get, I'm a little bit, at this point in time, kind of cranky over it because I really wanted to do this last year and, but we'll do it again this year and that's, that's the way it's gonna be. Lacey and Sherri, the only thing I would ask, right, and, and maybe in the morass of emails that I get on a regular basis, this is there. But one of the, one of the questions that was asked at the last override cycle was that the school district was, um, fat, dumb and happy, for lack of a better expression, okay? And it needed to make cuts, right? And that came to us by at least two or three taxpayers, Dunstable taxpayers in a, um, in a, in a, in a rather difficult kind of conversation. And so, and you don't need to answer this tonight, but what I would like to do is, I would like to get some narrative that's going to explain what Grotton Dunstable did to make the budget work in the current fiscal year. And, and, and I don't think that, that any point in time, that that was articulated at that level specifically, that there were staff cuts and there was this and we've done, and the district has done all these things. I'd like at some point here to get some of that information to come forward because those same taxpayers are still walking around thinking somehow that we just made it work. Well, the truth is, we did and there's a lot of pain that made that work. And it happened here on the municipal side too. But I'm not sure that we're prepared, we're prepared to answer specifically what Grotton Dunstable has done to make that, those numbers work. And I'm not asking for that information tonight, Leah, I don't mean to put you on the spot with the cherry, but and Lacey too as well, but you know, that, in anticipation, you know, in anticipation of those questions being asked, I'd like to get those answers developed before those questions get asked, right? And, and you know, you know, everybody thinks, they look out the window and they drive by the high school and they go, oh, there are things there and the grass is green, the buses are running and everything's just fine and see, we told you so. It's really not quite like that. It's really not quite like that. And I think what we've gotta do is get the district to kind of give us a little bit of analysis over, yeah, budget, but more specifically, what strategic, what strategic, um, strategically happened from a prior fiscal year to the current fiscal year? I, I, you know, that, I don't know if that information is all that well calculated so that we can go back to these folks and say, look, this is what's going on over there. And if we allow this to continue, there's gonna be further degradation in academic accomplishments and, you know, and, and that's where I'm going with this conversation tonight is that, cause I, you know, I'm not a stranger to the town's budget. I've been at it a long time and, but it's, it, it's, it's just, you know, there's this undercurrent that thinks the school district's fat, dumb and happy and we don't believe that's true at all. We, we really don't.
So, yeah, absolutely, we can do that. Um, we can get over, like, together maybe a memo of sorts and send it to, to Jason and then he can share it with you guys, is that work?
Yeah, that, that, that would be acceptable. And, and as I said, I don't mean to repeat myself, but I'm anticipating the questions and trying to develop the answers.
No, I think that's a good idea. Is that, or if, if there's a better way for us to do that, cause that's what I said, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know, however, you guys have anything that you've put together. I don't know if Grotton's asked this question. You know, we went to, and you guys were all there, we went to a bunch of meetings, okay? And we sat at the Grotton Senior Center over there and listened to all the, I, I, I hear all that, but we're back with the same thing all over again. And more specifically, this, I can name two or three people in, in the town of Dunstable that are sitting back going, see, we told you so. It's not like that, it is not like that. It's not a see, I told you so thing at all. That district has had a lot, in my opinion, from what I know, has gone through a lot of pain to make that number work.
So, um, we've been, Dr. Bruno's been giving, uh, presentations every school committee. And when we've been talking about the budgets, he has included slides that shows the twenty seven positions cut. And then we've inspired, uh, adding impact of those cuts. Um, and certain things, increased class size, um, features that we've seen. So, uh, on our webpage, um, there is a, a button that you can click that says the twenty seven. We've been trying to put all of the presentations, um, on that site. So that's one thing, but what we can do is put that as its own document. Um, so you don't have to fish through a, a slide yet, it would just be there. Um, and then another thing that we've talked about doing is a frequently asked questions, um, document. Um, people can email to budgetquestions@gdrst.org. I'm known for that. And they can send that and I think we decide once a week, I would update the frequently asked questions with questions and answers so that it will be a living document and that it would be accessible. Um, so that we were thinking we could have good communication a little bit that way. And people haven't happened yet, ask us the questions directly.
Yeah, I think that would be great, I mean, just getting the information out there to the people so they, they know that there is an impact on the decisions.
And, and that, and that opportunity for folks to ask those questions needs to be, in, in, in my opinion, needs to be articulated on Grotton Dunstable's website and easily accessed so that people cannot come to us and say, oh, I just spent the last three days and I can't find it. We wanna make it like a banner, click on this and get your answers. Because that's another piece of, of the discussions that, you know, a lot of people are not feeling that the information is, um, and I can think of one guy in particular. The information is, is, is not well, not readily available or difficult to find. And that somehow, um, the fact that it's difficult to find, not readily available, i- is, is a management strategy, it's not, it's not. It's, you know, let's put it out there and let's give everybody that opportunity to ask their questions specifically to the district and get those answers.
From, just one question. So again, I, I think I said this at that last meeting, this will be a task for us as a board, but in working with Jason is creating a, a glorious one pager that says this is what's going on in our, probably on our what's going on at Dunstable headline, essentially. And the schools, I know you guys are great at that, so also creating a, a one pager. And then, you know, last year, there was so much energy put into the folks that were supportive of an override from the school angle and like the PT, you know, the parents and such. Do you feel that that energy is still present?
Yeah, I, I do think that, I think, you know, this year we're on a little bit of a different timeline, like last year we rolled it early. This year we're not doing that, so I think it hasn't really, it's just starting to kind of click in that, okay, it's gonna be budget cycle season again and people are just starting to kind of tune in and so I don't think that at this point in time, people are like raring to go. But not because they won't, just because I think that like, it's
Time.
Not time, yeah, you know, but I, I do, I have every reason to believe that, you know, come like March, you know, once we're gonna start running forums and stuff like that, I would love, expect to see that level of engagement again.
Yeah, and what's the, I have no idea if this is acceptable, politically correct or whatever, but it, I almost wanna survey the parents that are within the district and say, how willing are you to pay five hundred dollars more a year approximately, at least for Dunstable? Like, yeah, whatever the number is, like, because if that's a resounding no and you get those results in March, then we're wasting our time.
That's an interesting idea, I had actually thought about that too.
What's the point, otherwise, if everyone, if you get eighty percent say no, then we shouldn't be doing this type of effort.
It's just, I think, I, I would be open to doing that and I think it's a great idea. My thinking on it is, I feel like there needs to be sort of a, an education piece first of like, this is what we're talking about and this is why we're asking for this and this is sort of the alternative, like if, if this doesn't happen. Because I think if we just sort of put it out there now, people would be like, do I want to pay four hundred and whatever dollars more or not? No, I'll say no.
Well, right, cause they don't know what they'd be.
Right, exactly, right, so I think right now, like our goal over the next month or so, um, it's like the budget book comes out February twelfth. And so basically over the next month, we're trying to do, um, as much, um, sort of public information and, and, you know, education as possible in terms of what our budget is looking like. So I would think that maybe if it's trying to do that would be like late February or the March, maybe, I don't know if that.
Yeah, and then do you find that, like on, do you guys track like with Google Analytics or anything on your website, what the activity is when you post up like a new? Like, and you find that it's, it's a high, like a more than a third of the parent teacher population?
Um, in terms of.
As like an enrollment, like how many people are actually looking at the site?
Okay, so I can, we have like different, um, you know, there's a website, but like I do the school committee newsletter. So I can see, I can directly check like the analytics on that. So I can say that when I send out a newsletter, which is like once a month, there's usually about twelve hundred views, which I would say is. there's usually about 1,200 views, which I would say is a decent, I mean, there's 2,400 students, so that's, you know.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm just curious because then it's almost like, when we do this, we mail everyone the flyer, we tell people, we basically drive it to their house nowadays. So you guys are doing the same thing, but like, you can't tell me you didn't mail. It's like, yeah, famous line, so.
I've been thinking about, so our newsletter, we mail, like we, it goes out to an email blast to all parents. But there's really, we don't do a print copy, but it's something that I've been thinking about doing so that there is a way to reach people that aren't parents, that aren't on like the email list, right? The two challenges that I see with that are, one, budget. And two, like our, um, newsletters are pretty heavy on links. Like a lot of times I'll link, you know, school committee presentations or, you know, various other things in there. So it's not really necessarily super conducive to a print copy. But I have thought about maybe doing a limited number of printouts and maybe keeping them here at town hall and like the library. I don't know if you guys would think that would be beneficial?
It's just, whatever it takes to get people to say they didn't see them.
That's right.
I don't know how, like, you know, and, and, you know, whatever they vote in the voting booth is their call, but at least, at least you said you tried everything you could and.
We did ask in the annual survey that we conducted, we did ask what people would support to balance the budget. And one of the, one of the options wasn't override. This isn't the same thing, but, you know, it's the information we have. And it was definitely the most divided of the options. There were people who would support it and there were people who clearly wouldn't. It was almost 50/50. There were other options that had high yeses or otherwise. But that one was the most divided of the options.
That's just when your average tax bill of $9600 becomes 1100 or 10100, you're like, well, that's 10,000 bucks. 9,000 sounds a lot, but, I mean, right, that's just how, yeah, I don't know. No, but thank you, I think that's the right idea. I mean, I like surveying people because then you could say, did you participate? Like, did you show up to vote, you know?
Joan, do you still have a question?
I forgot.
Okay.
I haven't, I haven't forgotten. I just was curious if you have a, a current figure for your excess of your budget.
That's a cherry question.
I have 1.4 million right now. Um, the primary budget uses 400,000, whereas we use 500,000 this current year. So that's, you know, a step down a little bit. But I think that's something that's hopefully we should revisit.
All right, is there anything else that we want to discuss at this point?
Open to an override question.
I am, I, they are.
I've been open to it since last year.
We have to, yeah.
4.82 on the town side, is that?
It's pretty much the call of life.
It's, it's, it is, it's funding things. I wouldn't describe it as a level service. I would, it's, it's less than a level service, honestly.
And there are some numbers that, as you're saying, some of the insurance things are just exceptionally higher than were anticipated. And there are things, I mean, just like that, that we have no control over. It's just true in everyone's household budgets, so.
Free cash, use reduction by $50,000. We want to fix it up on that.
For now, yeah?
Yeah, I think that's an opening position, yeah. Thank you.
What's the, um, assuming Grotten is not at the stomach to go for another override? But either way, we need one, right? And, yeah, so if they don't go for another override, we would need an override, how much? That's the 261,000 dollar figure?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else on the budget? On the board? Jason, Bonnie?
I'm, I'm.
There's no motion you need for this?
No, there's not. Thank you, school folks.
Okay, um, yeah, thanks for coming on. So in order to order our six o'clock presentation, let me take that out of order and address the two other items after the fact. Unless they can be done very, very quickly.
We can quickly move to appoint Bonnie as a treasurer collector.
All right, let's just knock them out.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from January 8th, 2025.
Second.
What's your favor?
Hi.
Uh, move to appoint Bonnie Riccadelli as, as intern treasurer collector.
Well, hold on a second. That's not how this reads.
But it should be interim because we're going to try to hire another one at the same time.
Okay, so interim needs to go into the motion.
Does it, does it matter?
I'm just, it doesn't need to be there.
Okay.
Second.
What's your favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay.
I'm just planning on Bonnie.
She's just never leaving.
NIMCOG, who do we have here tonight?
Before we get started, please, all to order the planning board.
Second.
Maybe we.
Sure.
And I would like to call to order the planning board.
Okay. Very good, thank you both. Hello?
Howdy.
Hi.
I can make a quick introduction.
Yeah, sure.
I'm Jennifer Raitt, I'm the executive director of NIMCA. At the Regional Planning Agency, we're based in Greater Lowell. Obviously, it's on school, it's part of our region. And I'm joined by Kelly Lineama, who's deputy director, and Chris Hayes, who is the Housing and Economic Development Program Manager. Chris is actually going to be delivering this presentation and we'll all, of course, be here for, to answer any questions. I might move back to a seat so I'm not in the way.
Thanks for coming in.
Presentation, you're welcome.
I can't, they're both excited. All yours. Okay, I, I, thank you so much, Jenny, thank you, Cassandra, to give us the time to talk about at home the Greater Lowell Regional Housing Strategy. I'm going to start to leave tonight. The advanced slides, how should I just tell you?
Just tell me.
Okay, that sounds great. So, uh, in case you missed it, we're Northern Millicent Council of Governments, Regional Planning Agency for, uh, Greater Lowell, basically as far west as Pepperell. And we have been working on a regional housing strategy. A few of you participated in the last year. And we want to bring it to the rider group here in Dustable and affect all of municipalities. And, uh, what we're going to talk about today briefly is, uh, kind of why we're doing a regional housing plan and what exactly a regional housing plan is. Two, we want to talk about, um, the strategies in the plan. And I'll talk about why that's important and why we came here today to talk about them. And then finally, we'll be talking about what we're doing moving forward, uh, in our phase two. Put the next slide, please. So first of all, why did we start doing a regional housing plan? And that was basically because we heard that housing affordability and accessibility was a priority amongst all nine communities in our region. And we also heard that from the business community, actually. When we talked about economic development for our region, they said housing. Figure out housing and affect with the municipalities. And the business community asked what a regional approach to housing challenges would look like. And we really quickly saw that there was, I mean, I don't think it surprised anybody, but there is a housing issue both with increasing homelessness, uh, both families and individuals, even before the pandemic. We've seen some municipal shortages, staffing shortages, which have been related to cost of living, including housing. Uh, and we've heard that from the business community as well. And so one thing that we realized pretty quickly, uh, is that our population in our region, in our NIMCA region, isn't growing that steeply, but the number of households is growing. And that's because, uh, folks are aging, families are getting smaller. So the types of housing units that are needed are now different than they were 10, 20 years ago. We need accessible units and smaller units just to maintain the same population. And we saw that this, this really is a supply issue. Our vacancy rates have been consistently going down. And this again, this, this slide is for the NIMCOG region, uh, at least for the last 10 years. The dotted line is what's considered a healthy rate, uh, 8% for rentals, 2% for sales. And we've been seeing that vacancy rate consistently go down to nearly 0% for sales, where they just basically sell as soon as they go on the market. And even rentals are down to 2%. Next slide. And so we've seen that highly correlated with the increase of housing cost burden. That's people paying more than 30% of their income on housing. And so that's about a third in our region. It's pretty consistent town to town. Dustable, Draken, Lowell, all have more or less 30% of their, um, households paying more than 30% of their income. Next slide. And so this is kind of where our outreach came in, seeing if, how this is impacting us. We've definitely heard this, the issue of seniors staying in the communities while downsizing, the labor shortages. But in the long term, we see some more concerns about, uh, with the amount of money going towards housing, that's less money spent in local businesses. I already mentioned the rising numbers of folks experiencing homelessness. But then we're seeing some, the beginning of some longer term trends that are very concerning, uh, including young adults leaving for less expensive areas, sometimes out of the state entirely or out of the North New England region entirely. We are seeing businesses beginning to consider to relocate or expand elsewhere because they cannot recruit and continue to have that young labor force in their, um, firms. And then finally, uh, we're seeing that there's potentially an increasing burden on the remaining residents, often older and on fixed incomes, to fuel the economy and to basically pay taxes for municipal services because the companies aren't expanding and young folks that have active incomes aren't expanding as much. So that's kind of why we thought regional approach, uh, was important. So we've been working together for about the past year. Like I mentioned, I really appreciate all of the folks who have contributed over the last year. Because we really have had a lot of input. Literally hundreds of people have input, given us input on the strategies, the goals and the challenges through three summits. Uh, also, we did a region-wide survey of, uh, types of leaders. And we've also done a lot of one-on-one interviews. And those are people from across the House, and effective government officials, people that are in nonprofits, but also the developers, owners, and other representatives of, representative neighborhoods and towns as well. And so what we're, uh, what we're proposing, what's the result? Is a set of local and regional actions, not necessarily mandates, uh, not a, not a policy change, but right now it's a plan, a framework that has both actions for NIMCOG and for all the regional partners that work across municipalities, but it also includes actions for each individual municipality. And that's really why we're here today to, to talk about that. And we're just finishing that part one, which is the data and strategies. We want to make sure to get the, the strategies correct because we're going to be starting the next couple of months of part two, the Toolkit and Implementation Guide. And so NIMCA is going to be actively working, uh, with our partners on elements to help local municipalities, uh, implement those actions that are being recommended. And what we ultimately are working toward, we want each municipality in all nine municipalities in the NIMCA region to basically give a thumbs up to the plan, sign onto the plan in some way so that we are providing a unified, uh, a unified face when we apply for grants collectively or when we advocate for changes in Boston at the state level, trying to present that unified face. And in that spirit, um, and I, I think we distributed, um, a set of 13, no, 17, 17 strategies amongst six goals. We are going to focus on a couple of them that really need to be municipal-led because they, they're on zoning and zoning is something that local municipalities rightly control. And, um, uh, but we're really talking about all these strategies. So if there are other strategies that you see that you want to talk about, we are happy to talk about them today. So we want to understand, would you support advancing the local actions of those strategies? And surprise them near plan. We want to know what you would need. What support do you need to advance those local actions? What should be in a implementation guide and toolkit? And then finally, if there are key actions that, uh, might need to have some support built, how could we adjust those or what can we do to build comfort with implementation and build support? And I, uh, do you have, Kelly, do you have anything that I can talk about the two strategies?
Yes.
Okay, cool. So the two zoning strategies I really want to draw attention to. One is, is, uh, what, uh, planners commonly call missing middle zoning. That really looks different from community to community. It obviously looks way different in Lowell than it is in Dustable. But, uh, uh, what we are recommending as a strategy to increase housing and increase the different types of housing for some of those is cottage-style, single-family development. So small a lot, I think it's, it's a lot like what's in the picture of the picture of the mixed use of housing right there. So finding more of that to allow more of that near town centers and potentially allowing duplexes, uh, or triplexes near town centers as well. And that would, uh, involve adjusting zoning. I'll go to the next slide. Um, the other one is taking a look at, uh, inclusionary zoning. That's the, uh, the, the pieces of bylaws that says if a developer builds seven units, the seventh unit has to be subsidized and income restricted affordable to, let's say, 80% of the heavy and median income. And I believe Dustable does have that, uh, inclusionary zoning. And what we are recommending is that each of the communities go through kind of a market study to determine the right thresholds and see if they could be adjusted, whether that means asking for more affordable units or fewer affordable units. But either way, figuring out how to tweak that zoning to maximize your housing goals because we've seen that that hasn't happened in, in a while amongst many of the communities. So, uh, we'll, we'll kind of turn it over to free conversation with questions and discussion soon. But just looking forward, what our commitment is, what NIMCOG's commitment is. So first of all, I mentioned this part one, data and strategies. So we're getting in with all nine communities over the month of February and, uh, I hate to say it, but you guys are the guinea pigs. You're the first presentation we're doing. So, uh, over the month of February, we're going to get that input. By the end of February, early March, we will have that finalized version to share for, uh, that part one. And then over the rest of 2025, we will be regularly communicating, uh, through phase two to complete the part two Toolkit and Implementation Guide. Our goal is to have that done by this fall. So, um, I, I know a few of you are able to attend our fall summit in 2024. We'll have another one of those in 2025 and our goal is to get this part two done so we can really be working on implementation basically in 2025. And then we would, of course, return to share that part two when it is completed. And I believe that's, that's all we have for you right now, other than answers to your questions.
Go ahead. See who that is back there.
What is the incentive from the state front to do this? Because they need to keep proff, burn, touch town, especially with our regional school district, where we don't have a lot of funds. They need to keep proff, they're hard enough to do this because then when it comes to time to help out our project, you're not there. And I'm only saying that because if you look at this district and this we represent right now, a lot of towns in the whole pride, like, yeah.
There's a few answers to that, and I have the points to the ginnie code to add on to anything I say. But first of all, this is a regional plan. This is something that we can do, not with the state's help necessarily. It's, the state is working on a statewide plan that we're going to be learning more about this week, actually. And so we will be able to know more about how the state can help implementation and support that. Number two, we do have, we have six goals. One of the goals literally is about increasing the amount of funding to the region, to support infrastructure and schools to really help pay for the costs of this additional housing. And we want to work with the state to better understand how we can do that. Then number three, we've been doing some research, and we do see that, and we will be having this kind of a little plan, that the towns that are experiencing growth in a number of households are tending to have increases in their tax base that is growing faster than the increases to their costs. We're seeing the most struggle in towns that basically aren't growing. They don't have new growth revenue. They have declining student enrollment, which impacts the amount that the state provides for the schools as state aid. So it's not a complete answer, and there's certainly various. Every town is different, and every town's finances is different. But we do see that generally, one of the biggest concerns financially is actually towns that don't have a lot of new growth, either in population or in households.
So one sort of data point that comes to my head is, like I know here in Dunstable, we have a pretty limited water infrastructure setup. But I know other towns like Pepperell, Townsend, some of the other NIMCOG regions have a much broader reach. So I think it's important to understand data-wise, especially with some of the activity in Pepperell, where there is a broadening of some apartment complexes to be proposed. But then the stop point is the cost to have water efforts. And if I'm a pretty data-driven person, I'd want to see what's the cost for me to hook up a hundred apartments by paying the $5,000 per apartment? And if there's a strategy behind NIMCOG's influence in the area to help offset some of those costs and make the municipality understand the benefit, you know, and sort of, that would help. Because there's costs in town as well, looking up to the water system, the better the fee and such. So I think some of those, not necessarily waivers, but if you just have the huge macro view and then you're able to incentivize a developer to say, let's, you know, we'll give you a waiver of the first five apartments, the first five single cottages. There might be some benefit there, especially to the municipality if they're going to get ten units out of it, and you waive the first five and pay for the other five. I don't know. Just try to create a data point that we understand what's going on in all the towns around us. And if we're out of whack, if our expense is too high, and then try to align them all up together. Because we're a regional water department, so shouldn't our fees be comparable? Yeah, in theory, they should be, but I don't think they are. Same with like trash service, or they could do the same thing with trash service for these big productions, you know, these big apartment complexes. They could all have this same trash company. Maybe there's a benefit in having everybody use Shaw or DPS, whatever it is, to provide them the trash pickup. So understanding the resources and then ways that larger buy-in power would be useful because it would incentivize people to do that. But I think it's the right practice, and whether it be flex within buffer zones. Like I know I love the turtles, and I talk about it on every memorial parade. But, you know, is it finding ways to help developers improve replication zones? Because maybe there's a little flex elsewhere. I don't know, just an idea. I'm all for conservation and protecting, but you have no housing. There's nowhere for anybody to go, so I think we have to find some.
Well, we do have two projects underway. Well, one is very close to being underway, and the other is in review, which is going to bring in 200 units.
Yeah, but this is macro for.
For this town.
The entire region, right?
Yeah, but we're short 5,000 housing units in the state of Massachusetts. So we have to find a way collectively to help, you know, and be resourceful.
Part of the problem there is that, you know, of all these nine communities, you know, Dunstable is clearly the smallest. You know, we're just a very small town compared to every other town in this group. Now, as Karen said, we have 44 units of housing coming along behind the post office. We have another 156 units in the works for the center of town. You know, I'm interested to hear what you have to say. But, you know, there's only so much, there's only so much we can do along with the governor's new, what is it, ADU, you know, plan that's going to enable people to, you know, do a lot more, add on, you know, accessory units.
Which we already have.
Excuse me?
Which we already have.
Which, well, we had to a degree, yes, to a degree. You know, I think we're, I think we're doing our share, our part here. And I mean, of course, we have more developments, you know, just here and there, you know. But I just, you know, when you look around, you look at these towns, and they're all, you mentioned being able to, you know, affordability. When you don't have, you know, it's the smaller towns that don't, you know, can't keep up. Well, the bigger towns aren't keeping up either. You know, they have the same problems we do. You know, they have all the business, they have all the, all the, you know, housing and everything. They have more housing, of course, than we do. But they don't have any money either. So, you know, I mean, I'm certainly interested to see how we progress here. But, you know, I want Dunstable to stay Dunstable. And, you know, I'm not interested in, you know, seeing and promoting, you know, a bunch of development. So, sorry.
I'd like to pick up on what Joan said. We have real needs in town for affordable housing, for our people. We need to do a lot for our people. Quite frankly, I'm not so interested in solving the district's housing issues simply because we happen to have a lot of open space, which some people call unimproved. And it used to be a concept back in the day, came out of Europe, I guess, called Green Belt. And wear it for our district. If you fly over Dunstable and look at the state line, you will see Nashua, which has a lot of development, a business district, and the like, just packed right down to the line. And then it turns green. And you know what? Half the people using that thousand acres or so along that line of open space, protected open space, come from Nashua, which is great, that's good. But the point is, they need someplace to go. When I was a kid, this was the area where people from Lowell came to hunt. And they'd dog, and they'd enter with their building and so forth. Well, they don't come here for that anymore, but they come with their kayaks, and they come with their bicycles and so forth. A state elected person remarked last year that Dunstable's ace in the hole was all this land we've got. The idea being apparently that we develop one way or another. Well, that's one way to look at it. Another way to look at it is that we're going to be replaced by people who can hopefully come and quality life stuff like open space. And so although we, I definitely understand that we need to take care of our people and their needs, that we have the housing, and we haven't done it, it's time to do it. But I'm not interested particularly in being part of a solution to turn this into Tewksbury's or something like that. More, keep in mind, we wouldn't agree about this, that's it.
So maybe going off that thought is, if I'm a, if you're working within the region, it's okay. Like, from the state perspective, is there a credit, like really green town can assist its region with? So we keep our town really green, and that's really helpful to the environment in a bigger picture. Maybe there's a program where that offsets Tewksbury's, you know, putting in a zillion homes, whatever, right? Like, try to find one, it's like, it's like an environmental credit. Like carbon credits are like Bank of America bias and things like that. Like, maybe there's a program where you allow Tewksbury, because it's NIMCOG, to build 200 to four housing units. And the green space in Dunstable helps offset the consumption of the green space, the turtles down there, because we sleep them up here.
Or finding a way that the town can benefit the region in another way rather than, because, you know, I think as Joan did say, we have inclusionary zoning. I mean, we're kind of checking some of the boxes that are here, which is, you know, a great example for the other towns in the region. And we have actually, with the cottages that you showed up there, is the project that we are putting in, which is great. And the other 156 unit that's coming in, which, you know, to us, that, back to another town, that may not seem like much to us, that's significant.
It's a significant amount of stocks.
Yeah. It's a significant amount of housing units that are already coming in. So I don't know, maybe there's a little bit of like, we don't want more. So we don't want to be changing our zoning for this or doing that to try to be spurring more of this type of, you know, 100-plus unit developments coming in. But I didn't, I personally wouldn't say that we don't want to be part of this and have some say and provide some sort of, you know, other benefit that we can.
I think the, could I say my point?
Yeah, yeah.
I think the benefit for us could be a few things. One, because we have these projects in the queue, we really should be, I think Karen was saying this, we really should be improving some of our infrastructure to support those projects, water, sidewalks. And we don't have the money to do that. And there are state programs that connect infrastructure dollars with housing developments that we should be, could be taking advantage of to do those type of things that I think, you know, as part of this strengthens our position to access that money. The other thing, and just being in town hall, I hear it a lot. And I think these two projects are going to really, really help with that, especially the MCL project. But I hear a lot of people who are aging, who are from Dunstable, who have lived here, there, their entire life, come in to pay their taxes, complain about paying their taxes, and then say, I'm going to have to move out of town. I don't want to move out of town. And I wish there was somewhere I could go. And they don't necessarily want, it's not even about, in some cases, affordable housing. It's about going into a different type of housing that they're in now, right? Because they don't have the capacity to care for the house that they're in now. Because our zoning requires large lots and basically large houses, and that's what's built here. And so even with the inclusionary housing zoning bylaw, it's hard for developers, developers don't really make it work, or having a hard time making it work because they're building million-dollar homes, and they have to build a seventh or a sixth home that looks like it, but they need to make it affordable. That's a, that's a real challenge. If we cut the lot, I'm just, I'm not saying this is the answer, but if we cut the lot size in half and allowed smaller homes to be built, guess what? That makes it easier for the developer to comply. So I'm just saying, those cottage-style homes, that's a real, so, I mean, that's like, I personally kind of publicized that project on my social media because it's a real innovative and creative way to address the problem that the town took on their own to address it. And it's, and the response I got was really positive.
Great.
From housing advocates to rural communities saying, wow, that's a really creative way to address it.
And there's two things about that. First of all, as you indicate, the town has been trying to do that proactively for over 10 years. Now, various things happened along the way, some beyond our control, which postponed it. Finally, it's happening, they're going to be built in the spring, in summer, I would say.
Hopefully.
Hopefully. And the turtles will be taken care of, because I know.
Oh, yeah.
Here, more.
I do, I like the turtles.
So, you know, that's to our town's credit.
It is.
It will.
I agree.
And there was another point that I was going to make, but of course it's.
Well.
But it is, it's an accomplishment of the town to be able, for the town to make the property available, shape the project in a way that really was creative and addressed the need. And it's not, you know, a typical kind of throw up a five-story building with affordable units in it, call it a day. It's actually these kind of middle, probably missing middle homes that people, a lot of people, are really looking for.
And we're using nine acres.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Having, cutting your lot size to an acre, or even a half an acre, and just slapping up a lot of homes, that's, that's on. This is the way to go. I held the other promise, I made. That is, that it turns out that aside from open space, you know, the kindergartners and hypos and one thing or another, fresh air and clean water and all that, water, we're all aware that low and behold, we have one of the best public water supplies around, both in quality and quantity. And it turns out the state loves it. We're working with Pepperell to share water with them, which will bring us some money because it will be down the road as well. But again, our natural resources, not for development, but necessary, except for our own needs. You know, we're going to be providing water. And it turns out that we have about 1,000 acres already protected around that landfill and the town meeting that's recently overprotective, you know, around that landfill. That's smart.
Good job.
So I'm just trying to understand. I think most, if not all of us in this room, look at the project that I'm in, contact us, and call the board, town homes, and we say that that's a good project. So is there quite, is there a question on the table of like, can we update zoning to move additional projects like that possible? Or what are we trying to do here?
It's part of the project that they're, they're not proposing a project necessarily to tell us to do that. It's recommendations to how a town in this region may be able to sort of booster the ability for them to do a project like that for towns that, and you could probably answer this. I know you can answer this better than I can, but Joan.
So I think, you know, we're mostly talking about the strategy. It's not just the first strategy, it's implement zoning changes that encourage the production of housing to meet current and future needs. And that's basically it. We probably aren't really talking about, let's say, changing our, I don't know, sure, our 40, our 1, our A, but like the base residential district to make it smaller lots. but like the base residential district to make it smaller lots. What we are suggesting is that each town think about where those cottage-style developments make sense, often near town centers, for towns that have highways, sometimes it's near the engine change. For towns that have train stations, it's near the train station. And yes, adjust the zoning to allow for more of that style of housing. In some cases, I think in Dunstable, the cottage style really makes a lot of sense. In some cases, it might be duplexes or or townhomes. In Lowell, it might be five-story apartments. But that's kind of where we're, what what the 1.1 really means, what that suggestion of zoning means. Now, there's a lot of other kind of recommendations, but I think they're, I think that's the one that's probably needs the most local thought and local action. And we definitely are thinking of this as a regional approach because what what Lowell does impacts Dunstable, what Dunstable does impacts Pepperell, et cetera. But that we haven't, and you know, we know just kind of looking at the projection data and looking at where we want to get that vacancy number, so it's back up to that number, it's it's 20,000 units in in 10 years. But that's 20,000 units of a 2000-year region. And what we hope to do in the coming year is, once we get kind of the acceptance that every town has a part to play, but it's gonna all look very different, is really work through that and say, Dunstable's part is gonna look a lot different and smaller because it doesn't have access to highways or train stations. But it does have a lot of amenities near the town center that that lends itself to the cottage style. And so kind of work through the times to figure out what that might look like. And again, not mandating it, but rather figuring out how we can help.
Jason, do we go to use a voice to adjust the 40B regulations? Because I think affordable housing is a bit of an oxygen bomb. If a transaction takes place, somebody could afford it. So what I think Jason said and some other people already said is, we have an entry-level home price pressure and we have an age-in-place price pressure. And I think if we could adjust the, we can adjust the zoning ourselves, don't necessarily need NIMCOG to do it. But if we wanted to build more SHI, we could add a neighborhood with two-acre homes. And maybe they sell for 1 million, maybe they sell for 1.2, it doesn't matter. The market will bear whatever that price is. But I think you were saying, Jason, if we go down to a half an acre, if we did that, we would presumably, I think that you're saying it's lower than the average price in that particular development. And I think what that does is it sort of homogenizes us to be a little 20% better than the SHI. And why do that? Why not allow there to be a million-dollar neighborhood? But put two affordable housing, affordable units in. And and make that unit look exactly like all the other units. But it happens to be divided down the down the middle, and it happens to be included in the SHI. I think that's a great way to address the problem for towns like Dunstable. And it doesn't have to be statewide, it could be modifications to the 40B regulations that allows towns, for example, to have fewer than 5,000. You know, there are other regulations in the state rules that regulate certain things when the population goes up. They could choose a certain number, let's say for towns smaller than this, you now have the the option of putting in SHI that doesn't have to be identical in Springfield, for example. So if it could use your voice to change that law, I think that would be a great thing.
I think I think the reason, though, just to try to answer that question, and this is a community decision, but if I were to answer that question, the reason is, is because people in the community are looking for different types of housing, not just a million-dollar home.
Sure.
And so the reason to consider something different than that is because it would serve people in the community in a way different than what's being offered now.
Yeah. Though we had the thought, if someone had 10 acres, and they said, we want to come in and put in 20 homes. We today have the authority to do that without, I don't know, adjustment to the state laws, except the SHI definition.
Right. But zoning is a way to influence what's built in your community.
It it promotes it, it precedes somebody saying, oh, I have a great idea, I'm trying to.
It allows the community to control what's built rather than the developer.
Thank you. I definitely get that.
To me, the problem with, you know, your idea of half-acre lots.
I I can you take that off the table? I'm sorry, I didn't say that, I really didn't. I I wasn't proposing half-acre lots, I just gave an example. Don't use that, please don't use that.
There's within town, a feeling, a lot of comment, that, you know, one one idea, a common idea is reduce the lot size. The problem with that is you're still gonna have million-dollar homes. I mean, when you have clusters, we have clusters on it. And, you know, obviously, how that deal is less than two-acre lots. And they tend to be acre lots, maybe a little less. Guess what? They're million-dollar homes. So and and if we were half-acre lots, we'd do the same thing. Whereas my district, 26 units, that really solves some issues. Pride of the farm. Only problem, personally speaking, that I have with that is the number, 156. We're gonna have my view, our own little urban center in Dunstable. Imagine if it was 60. Piece of cake, great. Put 60 somewhere else in town. So they fit in. But that is the way, I would think, that we solve the issue of the beginners, the enders, the town employees, whatever the issue is. And, you know, we're we're making a good start, I think.
And I really, I was not, I just, I needed an example and I just pulled it from my head.
I know we'll give 30 acres, you know, I.
Yeah.
You were fairly free, you know. Let's let's go. And of course, people don't understand, we don't have town surgery, you know, and we're not going.
Right. Maybe just for like strategy, it's, you know, I'm kind of paraphrasing a few different folks. It's like focusing on this, like the, how to properly build out sidewalks, bike lanes, things that people really enjoy about the town, they seek out Dunstable for. And what that means infrastructure-wise to us, like the 113 project's wonderful, it was, it's awesome. It's done such a great job for traffic and movement through town and smoothing it out. You know, and you have some water that went down it, so like it's, you know, strategy-wise, I think it's finding more ways to enhance the features we have and getting to them. Because I think these other communities within the NIMCOG district could probably also benefit from some of those sidewalks, street lighting, you know, the right types of street lighting, you know, the right types of curbs for nature and conservation and turtles or salmonage, whatever it is. Because I think there's a lot of hesitancy, especially in Dunstable, because we don't want to change what it is. But I think we could improve bike lanes. We've had a number of people come to our meetings about how fast people drive here in town. And how it can be a little scary to be a person walking a dog on a side road. So I think there is some resources and power at NIMCOG within all these regions to help improve those things and give recommendations and perhaps point us in the right, you know, direction for getting a large company to come and assist us with the paving or whatever, or work with our rate commission and so on, so.
So I've got a chance to talk about the 40Bs. We do have one recommendation that's, uh, Housing Services Office, basically. And that will also help allow us to look across the region and see what challenges we have with with 40Bs in terms of, uh, developing or not. I know there's some, there's some concern about fair housing, basically saying that, you know, the subsidized unit isn't as nice as the other unit. That could be, that could be things that they explore in that regional housing office, definitely. In terms of bike and head stuff, yes, agreed. That's not for the housing plan, but we are doing a regional bike and head plan.
But it does improve housing.
Yes.
So like it is, it is connected 100%.
This is this is about housing affordability, but absolutely 100% holistic.
Yeah. Well, if you had a bike path from our affordable housing district, you could potentially work at Dunkin' Donuts or the coffee house or whatever's gonna go in that space.
You could tie it over together or something.
Yeah, I mean, that's, or you could walk to the library and, you know, work that.
And that's, I think, what we're getting at with thinking about, kind of proactively thinking about where those other clusters are. Rather than saying they go anywhere, they go places where a bike and head path might be able to already be.
Yeah. No, that's great.
That's what we're asking today. Unless, unless we want to keep talking about the strategies just more broadly, but just to kind of make sure that we heard everything that you told us, which has been very helpful, and I believe that we have more things on the agenda, so. Yeah, thanks.
Yep.
You know, then we'll go back to bullet point one. But what I just, I'm just, I'm just sitting here, just like saying and summarizing. Yeah, thank you. So you, sort of, in terms of what do you need to advance any local actions? And of course, it's, we understand that you might not do everything that's been planned, right? That's not what we're asking. What we're asking is do you support advancing those local actions in some form that makes sense to Dunstable in order to meet those strategies in the coming five to 10 years? So it's like a long horizon. You also did just adopt a housing production plan. Last year?
Last, last year.
That was last year, yeah.
Last year.
It was last year.
It was adopted last year.
It was adopted last year, okay. So you have a housing production plan that's in place, it's a five-year plan. And that's also a roadmap for the town in terms of how you want to meet housing goals. And this in no way supersedes that, in fact, it's complementary and and helpful in terms of what we've already thought about and discussed in terms of thinking about housing. But I think what I heard was a little bit that we should think about in our planning, that would help you to advance these local actions would be more about incentives. You know, and the the question was raised in different ways about what types of incentives would be helpful in order to better understand what is the incentive for the housing? And also, how could it be incentivized? A little bit of book, like what's the incentive for the town to do this? But also what incentives are there if we do this? And then understanding a little bit more about metrics around infrastructure and infrastructure kind of broadly, including some of the amenities that we just talked about, like sidewalks, access. We talked about water, we talked about a lot of other things. But I think that those are complementary to anybody's experience living in a neighborhood. You know, you live in your house, but you live in your house in a place that ideally has those things that you want that make it feel like it's your home in the neighborhood. And then I think on the last bullet point, there, and also a little bit diving in more deeply on the second bullet point would also be about affordability, that there are specific needs that you have. And then we've talked about also in the housing production plan around people who are aging and like which are different options, and there's there's others I remember as well. But since we talked a little bit about that first one, you know, how do we get that type of housing that we need here in Dunstable? That meets that particular type of demand for people who are aging and may wish for just a different housing option? Not necessarily affordable housing, but any option would be helpful. On the third bullet point, what I heard was just a better understanding that you'd want to see would be a better understanding of benefits across the region. What does that actually look like? Because we, and not a great comparison in our region, necessarily we'll, we'll look at all the strategies and say, and these are things that we can do too. Every community is gonna have a different way of vocalizing and, you know, having opinions about what those things mean for their respective communities, whether it's Lowell or Tewksbury. Those are the two that come up, like also Bill Rick and Charles R. They all have their own very, very unique perspectives and opinions about development and about preservation. So I think understanding or better understanding of benefits across the region would be helpful. What does it look like in Dunstable versus those other communities? And what is the collective benefit? And then the last one that I heard was that we we don't have it necessarily spelled out yet, but what other state-level changes or guidance might be useful in order to better achieve these goals? So that's, that's what I heard. Did I miss anything? I don't know. No, I'm just saying that the only other thing that I'm hearing is definitely this this discussion that we have when we talk about housing, which is like, where do we want to conserve and where do we want to grow? And particularly thinking about the amazing open space amenities in Dunstable, and we're looking to detract from that at all. It's just, it's around that strategic conversation about where is, where are different types of housing that are not just a 4,000 square foot homeowner to a acre lot? Where is that appropriate for Dunstable? Where is that strategically aligned with the infrastructure that you have? Or how is it aligned with grant opportunities to pay for infrastructure that you need? So that we can leverage that type of growth to get more benefits according to Dunstable for the things that you are already doing. So that's, I think, the other thing that I heard.
That's great. Yeah.
So I guess the first, the first bullet point. Because that's really what we were hoping for. You know, so we're moving into this next, as you saw, slide that we had been on for some time. Then we're moving in, we're wrapping up this phase one, we're moving into phase two. Part of that wrapped with phase one, and and as noted here first, just by math and calendars and availability. It's technically, it'd be technically first, but, but, you know, it's, it's, we're, we're going to be talking to every one of our communities. And that's the intention, is to have the same type of conversation, perhaps for, you know, maybe multiple conversations even. But we want to get a sense that you're on board so that we can confidently move on to our next step in the process. And and by on board, it's not asking you to adopt anything, to move forward exactly with a specific strategy today, but that you would support advancing the local actions and each strategy in the coming five to 10 years. In a broad, in a broad way, to make, so that we can begin to like explore the other things that you've mentioned. And then I'm sure there will be more things active on this, that we will begin to develop as we work in this.
Yeah.
What's the population of NIMCOG? Is it roughly 200,000 people?
310,000.
310, oh, and so, and we're about 3,600, I think, 3,600. So are we one, is that 1%? So 1% of 20,000 units would be 20 units, I think, 200, 2,200 units, it'd be 200 units of 20. 20, okay. So if we, if, it's easy to look at Dunstable, they wildered all that land. Well, they have land in Drake, they have land in Pepperell, too. But proportionally, we would be adding 20 units, for example.
Which is, I think, close to what we're required to do for our, to meet our SHI number.
Okay.
Based on the projects we have in the pipeline.
Yeah. Over a period of 10 years, there was 20,000 units needed over.
That's a good way to look at it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Not for your SHI, absolutely.
Okay.
That's based on the G S I.
Not for the SHI, no, I know, yeah. That was the initial figure, 20,000 units needed to be added. And if we represent 1% of the region. Okay, I got that, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah.
Jason, I have more of these interesting questions for you to answer, thank you.
Anything you want to.
I think the only other thing, I'm an activist, handout is a way that you can, there's a QR code, you can sign up and stay informed. As we go through phase two, please do that. We don't send a lot of email, but it is a way to know when other events are coming up, especially if people are like, wait, NIMCOG's doing this, we've got a few vibrant ones. So that is one way to stay informed. And I know that Jason helped us to share a survey in advance of this meeting. If you haven't taken it, we would still love to hear what you think. Especially now that we've had an opportunity to talk, so really, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
If there's anything else, if you want to share.
Does everyone have a copy?
That's all that maker.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
This has been like super helpful.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If you get summary bullet points or summary notes from every other town, and if that, like, you share that with Jason or just like the why the hell are you each, and you see like, you know, a Pepperell says towns in Tewksbury, because some problems are alike and some are so different. And it's just informative for us probably to understand what other communities are facing compared to us. Because we're not all alike, so we'll have that, so.
I think it's, you know, you're.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much, really appreciate it.
All right, thanks for coming in, folks, we appreciate it.
Do we want to have our boards that don't want to meet anymore just stay on the floor, we shift and things, unless they want to stay?
Make a motion for the play, put it in the chair for a second.
And leaving the room.
We're going to do that all of this and finish up.
For everybody, Joe?
I'll have a pizza.
Tell you Farm State's still open.
Thank you.
Pay off.
It's mine. It's mine. I have a buddy's.
You have about twenties?
I want a couple zeros on that bill. Christ.
That was a good meeting. Interesting. We're, we gotta back up against the wall.
Do you think that's, do you think that's his? That's not his?
Yeah, it's mine.
It is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't get outside of school.
All right, well, sorry, folks who are watching.
We can go on here, right?
We can continue on, so the next thing up here is the, Jason may want to speak to this, is the acto, agro.
Yeah.
Architectural services contract for the library and the bandstand improvements.
Okay, go on to give them an approval on a bin relocation.
We can do that, so.
I thought at our last meeting, we gave him.
Well, we were, we were.
Negotiate and to relocation.
We were going to, but there was a couple of other questions that we were waiting for.
Mr. Town Administrator?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm going to take this out of sequence, the bin relocation.
Oh, yeah.
When I, we had our last meeting, I had mine too. When we had our last meeting, you were charged with having approval, the ultimate authority and the go-to guide.
Well, so last meeting, we talked about two potential locations at the same site.
Yeah.
The Mud District.
Yeah.
So one was where it used to be.
Yep.
The other location on that site was.
Off the side.
Off to the side.
Yeah.
Adjacent to the driveway. I talked to the principal from MCO. I just want to make sure everyone's comfortable.
No, no, it's fine.
I talked to the, I talked to Mark. He essentially said he didn't care at all. However, he could not commit to having it there permanently.
I would agree.
Because he just doesn't know what the front site is going to be, what it's going to look like, what the layout is, et cetera, et cetera. So he's fine with us putting it back temporarily wherever we want to put it. And then long-term, he'll try to work with us on it, but he, he was just uncomfortable making that long-term commitment. Understandably so.
Absolutely.
So if it's all the same to you, we can move it back to where it used to be.
Yes.
And.
So are we moving it to the location on the driveway or are we moving it to where it used to be?
Where they were, but they can be reoriented.
Yes.
So that.
Wait a minute, they're going to be what?
They could, so, okay, you've got, here's the.
And Joan, Joan said they would paint them.
Yes.
Joan?
Joan Farm.
Remember they were here?
Where the cruisers sometimes hang. Where the cruiser always hangs.
Right. So that gives you a larger view of them.
Where are they going to go?
You could do it like this.
On the side?
Just pivot it 90 degrees, 90 degrees, 45 degrees.
And a nice spot in plan or something.
So it's not in full view, but still of equal access and they will, they can paint them another color because people seem to object to the blue.
We'll put it back where it is.
But I, let's follow her plan.
Okay.
We're going to reorientate them. All right? Just what, just what Leah has there. So they'll be perpendicular to the, excuse me, be parallel to the road.
Dark green.
Be parallel, be parallel to the driveway access.
Perpendicular to the road.
Perpendicular to.
Come July, they're moving anyways.
45 degrees from their original previous location.
I got it. All right.
All right, I.
So.
You're not going to have this put on agenda again.
I'll move to relocate the blue bins, the blue textile recycling bins to the Mud District site. In the location as discussed being.
No, they're.
Parallel to the driveway supporting the post office.
Not, not.
Do you have a second?
Probably assaulted and require.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Oh, it's a favor.
Aye.
Think about the billable hours that have gone into these blue bins.
Absurd.
And what the payback's been on this. That's a zero.
There's trees between the, the snail property and the post office, the road there.
Yeah.
Can we move it closer to the trees there and?
We, yeah, that's what we're going to do. We're going to do this.
We can.
Move them this way.
She's got a little sketch.
Right, and put them along that tree line there and, and nobody would.
Okay, we are no longer talking about the bins.
And they're not blue anymore, they're going to be green.
Until next time.
Nope.
Until next week.
All right, we're going to jump back into our number seven item here, which is the architectural services contract for the library and the bandstand improvements. Are these going to be done by the same person?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
What I'm going to, Rhino? No. Need an architect for renovations to the bandstand?
We, yes, because we still have, we still have state funding that we need to use. And at this point in the project, I need assistance with developing a scope on what we should do. Because we've done all the loaning for work. And so now there's some lighting potentially and there's other potential improvements, but I do need assistance. It's 1,200 bucks or something.
Okay, so this, this, this services contract is going to review the.
I just want to be correct on this, sorry.
I don't think it's 12.
No, it's 27.
27, yeah.
So this is going to be to review the bandstand, mark with proposed modifications and.
How?
In terms of an RFP, construction administration.
Yep. Yep, exactly.
And then the library.
Same with the library.
Yeah, so my question on the library is not specifically to what they're doing at the library, although you and I'll have a separate discussion the next day if you vote that. But has the library board voted to approve this contract? Because that's their, that's their.
I have been working directly with.
Maureen?
Yes, with the director. So I, I know that she's been communicating with them. I don't know if they've taken a formal, a formal vote on it. But this, we have, we received a total of $75,000 from FY25 state budget. And the purpose of the AMR was for two reasons. One was firefighter PPU. And then, which is $32,000 of it. And then the remaining balance is for the windows, 42, 43, 43,000. So, so we'll have about $36,000, $37,000 remaining. And so she's going to help us develop a scope of work that fits within our budget, which will be exterior doors, windows, trim, sockets.
At the library?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then after she does that, and that's 600 K in repair work.
Well, so we have, what, it's not going to be 600 K, but it will be more than our budget, there's no doubt about it. So that's part of what the work's going to be is prioritizing the most important stuff. That's why.
I guess at some point, I'm going to step into a couple of these things with the library. Because I'm, I'm telling you, that library is walking down a dark tunnel. They've got, they've got two boilers. Used to have three, one leak, they shut it off, they're running two. If it's five degrees outside, one of those boilers goes down, that library's going to freeze. Everything's going to freeze. It's, and the trouble with.
Get in the test of time, move this one.
This, this is architectural. And the trouble with it is that it's a whole, it's a whole new board, right? All the members that were there are, including the director. And I'm, I'm, it's, it's, the air conditioning system is original to the library, never been modified. Can't buy that refrigerant anymore. Our 22 is not available. And, you know, when I think about, we're going to have this, we're going to do doors and windows. And, you know, the boiler system is sitting behind a closed door and it's okay until it doesn't work anymore. And though, that's a, Jason, so, yeah, I certainly could, yeah, I can overreact sometimes. But in this particular case, that is a dark tunnel and they're going down it. And just, you and I have talked about these boilers. And those guys over there, one of those is, is, one of those boilers has been shut down and abandoned because it was in such poor condition. And they're running two. You can't heat that library with one boiler, you need two. They'll close it. And same thing with the electricity system. How old's the library, Joan, how old's the library, 25 years old? 25, 26 years old? Roughly, right?
Sounds all right.
I mean, that, you know, it's, these things, they're going to show up on somebody's radar screen.
So let me, let me just add, let me add to this. So this budget that we have from the state funding is certainly not enough to afford those items.
No, it's not.
We know, we know. So, but the other thing in motion that will hopefully help us do what you're saying is we have next Tuesday. I think it's next Tuesday, it's next week.
Tuesday or Wednesday?
Tuesday or Wednesday. We have a team subcontracted by National Grid coming out and doing evaluation, town hall, police station, highway, and lots of other. In the universe. And this is, this is the start of the effort to update our energy reduction plan under the Green Communities Act. So in order for us to apply for the next round of Green Communities money, we need to update our energy reduction plan. That is next Tuesday, Wednesday is the first step of it. I've already talked to them about the library and the SHI. So that is part of their work that's going to be done next week. Frankly, I think that's probably going to be the pro, well, we'll talk about it when we get there. But it's certainly going to be high on the list of priorities when we get to a point where we're applying, which is hopefully going to be the spring round, the spring round, coming up. So it's not lost, it's just, it's piecing it all together because we don't have a ton of local money. We're getting state money and we're part of, we're looking at these grant opportunities as a way to make some of them larger investments. So it's definitely not lost, it's just in progress.
Okay, I, I just, you know.
Are you, you are.
I'm perfectly, I'm not going to be sticking them out about an architectural services contract for windows and doors. But in my, in my narrow view, that library has got a lot more money to spend. I mean, you and I looked at that light pole. And there's this, there's this.
This is the end of it.
There's this discussion that, oh, we'll just go get another light pole. It's a $9,000 light pole. It is, it's not like, we're going to go to Home Depot and buy a new light pole. And, and, and that is part impossible. You and I looked at that, right? Most of those lights don't work. They're, they use mercury vapor lamps, which are pretty much not existent anymore. And it needs, it, that, we have that parking lot and put LED into it and you probably look at it at $45,000, $50,000 in poles and lamps. And, yeah, I mean, one light pole is, is about $3,500 just to buy the pole. And I'm sitting here going, I'm sure, doors and windows are like so far down the list, I can't even see them.
Well, this may be a little bigger discussion.
It could be. Now, the energy plan, okay, because they did an original energy plan. National Grid did an energy plan for us.
They did.
They did. And I have a copy of it, right? And we've, at the library, we've made significant efforts to meet that goal, right? We changed all the interior lighting over to LED eight years ago, whatever, quite a while ago, right? This place has never had anything, anything done to it. We did replace the boilers upstairs, okay? And whether or not the town administrator at the time ever got money that we should have gotten for putting in 95% efficient boilers, it was a rebate from National Grid Gas for putting in those lock-in bars that are up there, right? And it was a lot of money. How much? I think it was $10,000. That, that's a lot. I don't know that that ever happened and whether or not she applied for that. And I don't know whether or not, if she didn't, can we do it now? Where's the check? Yeah, I don't know. But that energy plan, we specifically got rid of those cast iron sectional boilers and put those lock-in bars in because the grid was, National Grid Gas was giving us 10 grand towards that project.
Okay, can we make this library beyond what we have here? Quickly, Joan, please, we still have.
You guys have been rushing me all night.
Aye, you know, we've got a lot to do still.
You're replacing doors in the library, what doors are you replacing?
So we don't, so we know the work is going to have, Maureen has a couple of doors that, one that doesn't. No, just close entirely. And then there's another one that has a lot of like rock on the bottom. If, if you're asking me exactly which ones, I'm not sure. But there's two that she's identi, there's two exterior doors that she's identified, I believe. And then I just have. Exterior.
Exterior doors.
And then I just have pictures of them, I haven't like, you know. So then there's a lot of window trim rock. And, you know, you can even, if you want to, when you can see like animal activity. And so that, those are the type of things, those are like the immediate needs that we're trying to scope out right now for the immediate work, just to address those issues.
The reason, the reason I ask is, you know, we're trying to, some of us are trying to, you know, get that, the community room to be a little more usable.
Accessible too.
And one of the, you know, problems with the, with the library trustees is that I guess the keys that, you know, fit every door in the place or whatever. So I was just going to say, you know, if you have to change some doors, maybe we could get, you know, a couple, you know, a different set of locks there so that, you know, so that you could use the community room and not have to worry about access to the library.
That's been done.
That, that plan is better to probably be done.
That's been done, yeah.
That it has been done?
It's pretty, pretty close. I know, I was down there, we wanted some key stuff to put in the other day about making sure that the keys open just for the other community room or something like that.
Oh, good.
See how quickly we can get things done? It happened in just five seconds right now.
They just put a new policy, they just wrote up a new policy and it's called, it's now called the, the meeting room. You know, and then it's, this room is, it's not the meeting room, it's the community room. And, you know, the library just, you know, can't. I, I'm not going to be able to say anything nice here, so I'm not going to say anything. But, you know, we got a problem here, so let's see if we can fix it. Let me hear the keys or the locks are being changed.
I moved to award a professional services contract to Emerald Design Build for architectural and design services for repairs to the bandstand and repairs to the library in the total amount of $9,000, 6,300 for the library, 2,700 for the bandstand. And authorize the chair of the board to sign the contract on behalf of the board.
I will second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just one quick little thing in here, probably irrelevant, but under the library section, there's just a typo where it still says bandstand instead of.
You know, she, for, for some of the site visits she's doing.
Yeah.
She put it on one, so she's not double charging us. Because it's only one visit for both of us.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, but this, this is for product selection, selection of bandstand replacement materials.
It's under library.
It is under the library.
It's under library, yeah. Okay, gotcha.
I think that's just a transposition.
It's just a, it's just, yeah, just.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, excellent.
Okay. The next one is the building improvement contract for the police station window indoor replacement.
I'm going to move this forward, move to award, move to award a contractor, FYG Contractor Corporation for the repair and replacement of the windows and doors at the police station in the amount of $44,235. And authorize the chair of the board to sign the contract on behalf of the board.
I will second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And FYI, that $44,000 is money that has come from the state. It is not coming out of our budget.
Quite beautiful.
Okay. Okay. Annual report discussion, did you have to?
Well, I was here in case you had any questions.
Okay.
I will say this real quickly, not that you need to extend this, but, um, so we had, we got a forty-four, forty-five thousand dollar quote, um. Earmarked.
Earmarked from the state, yeah.
And, um, we got, we, town meeting with twenty thousand dollars that we kind of assigned to this project in our overall bucket amount. So we had a total of sixty-five that we kind of earmarked.
Yeah.
For this project. Looks like we're only gonna need forty-five, which the earmark, the state earmark covers completely.
Yeah.
So, there's twenty thousand dollars in our capital appropriation that now becomes available, that we should talk about in some form.
Okay.
And the only thing I want to add to this, alright, so that we don't get into a fire alarm fire. The, the, the police station is in the historical district. Right, and whatever windows you're gonna put in there, you, I know, but that's, you gotta run that by them, they gotta have some say in that.
So perhaps that twenty thousand dollars might, may or may not be necessary for the historically satisfying.
How old is that?
They just have to look the same.
Well, that used to be the post office, right?
It's an old building.
Yeah, alright.
How old, does it have to be?
It's in the district, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta. Yeah, you gotta run that by them.
I mean, they just have to look the same, like, the union building weren't replaced with.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not.
So and that twenty thousand dollars could also, could be used to cover some of that?
If it is an issue.
No. Well, yes, but. If, if we have, if there's historical requirements and that.
Just ask the contractor for, ask the contractor for a submittal, alright? A submittal on the window. And, yeah, you gotta, and then.
Just make sure they get, make sure.
And next year, the energy code goes to triple pin windows, which is gonna be great. The cost of it.
Thanks, chief.
And then, I, I just. I want to just go back on one thing, Leah.
Maybe.
If we can, Bob Kennedy's issue with this painting of the roadways, right? You know, that has been before this board at least a couple of times, I think, in the years, right? I want to be sure that the road commissioner's addressed this conclusively.
Oh, they talked about it earlier.
Did they then?
They made a decision.
However we choose to get Bob, you know, you can call Stowe.
I'll call Stowe, I said I would call him.
There's no data, or, Stowe's not gonna say, oh yeah, we've cut the traffic.
It was included on their agenda, I think, as a result of the email I sent. So they did see the email I sent based on the conversation with Mr. Kennedy. They put it on their agenda, they talked about it, and I think they made a decision that they.
Well, Mike said.
He said, yes, yes.
Bob should, should have been, you know, I'm sorry, we, we've considered this, and we have, we're not taking this approach, and here's the reason why, just close it, because, I, I feel bad, he's been brushed, in my opinion, he's been brushed off a couple of times over this, and he's a nice guy, and he deserves a conclusive answer. We're not gonna do this, and here's the reason why. Really not a select board issue.
No, it's not, so I would really like to not spend more time on this.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Annual report?
Yeah, I forgot about that.
That was just for the cover, right?
No, no, this is to read.
It's an overhaul, it's a real. Do you want to, the, the question remains. We sent examples.
Yeah.
We basically sent examples of, of the annual reports that were recognized by.
So long ago, I've looked at them, I'm kidding.
So I did look at them, and a part of me, maybe I'm just a nerd for this, but actually, I like our design and just sort of the expectation that it's the same, and it's, you know, people maybe go to the same.
People know where we're flying.
Yeah, it's like going to the grocery store, right? Like, you know, if you go to aisle, whatever, it's gonna be fruit and vegetables.
Recognizable, yeah.
And like, and, you know, we, I think there might be some value just replicating what we do, because it's, it's notable, I don't want to waste paper or be insensitive to the work that you and Sue have done, but the other part of me says, just what Joanie summarized beautifully, that it's just, you go to page twenty, you know it's gonna be a dedication. But that's just one person's thought.
Yeah, maybe.
Can it be done on cheaper or not?
The only way to do it cheaper is not print it.
Yeah.
You got it, Henry.
I think at this point.
But it's not a problem, sure.
We've got a lot going on right now, and it may just be, I mean, just stick with what we have and.
Is it, does it create more of a burden for your office to do the same thing?
No, not.
You could, you're allowed.
It's not, it's not a burden for them to change.
That's, that's.
It's less, it's not challenging us as much, because I think we can do much better, but, but it's fine.
Yeah. Maybe we can revisit next year when.
Yeah.
When we have more money.
When we have more money.
More money to do it. It's not a money issue.
We're feeling a bit more spunky with creativity.
Ready to go?
Okay, yes, so, Joan, we're giving you the boot this time.
Alright, folks, good night, thank you very much.
Good night, Joan.
Have a good night.
Safe drive home. Um, we need to make sure we get shut off here. Oh, I can't do that. Yeah. We, make the motion to adjourn this.
Move that the select board enter into executive session pursuant to Master of Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One-A, purpose two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically Jason Silva, town administrator, and to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Jason Silva, the town administrator. The board will not reconvene in open session following executive session.
I will second that motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Ron Michael, aye.
Leah Bashfane's, aye.
Karen Dean, aye. Thank you for those online.
Good night, everyone, thank you for joining.